Okay. Go call, Jared.
Yes, sir. Mr. Adams here. Julie Tamarkey-Cukrow.
Present.
Mr. Harley.
Here.
Dr. McComby.
Here.
Dr. Reed.
Here.
Dr. Shaver.
Here.
Mr. Seem.
Here.
Mr. Stroh.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Okay, good evening, everyone. And thank you all for coming out this evening. I don't have a board president's message, per se, but I do have something that I would like to read and share with everyone. As you saw in the paper, and I think Sally, at least amongst the board members, passed out the article to all of us. Our own Rob Heinrich.
Yeah.
Received a rather prestigious award from the PASA, which I believe is a Pennsylvania. It was.
Association of.
Association of School Administrators, i.e. other people like Rob. And it was an award for instructional leadership for 2024. The Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators has recognized Mr. Robert Heinrich as the winner of their 2024 Instructional Leadership Award. Mr. Heinrich was presented the award by President of the PASA, Dr. Gennaro R. Parina, and the Director of PASA, Dr. Sherri Smith, at a ceremony in Harrisburg last Thursday afternoon. The award was presented to one school administrator each year for demonstrating commitment to excellence in teaching and learning by developing, nurturing, and supporting exemplary programs that support academic achievement of particular student populations, enriching student learning in a particular content area, and/or for implementing strategies to enhance student learning across the curriculum. Since joining the Indiana Area School District Leadership Team in 2019, Superintendent Heinrich has been instrumental in realigning the district's mathematics curriculum, shifting the district's reading and writing curriculum to a structured approach to develop literacy and vastly expanding dual enrollment opportunities for the school students. The PASA award, however, was in recognition of Mr. Heinrich's leadership in development of a multi-tiered system of support. We know it as MTSS, designed to help all students learn and grow both academically and behaviorally. The system that the team at Indiana has established uses a variety of data to determine individual student needs so teachers can provide appropriate academic or behavioral interventions designed to encourage student growth. Indiana's approach has become a model for other school districts across the Commonwealth. I'm not going to quote him. I'll let him hear in a minute because there is a quotation that he made. But the award includes a $1,000 check sponsored by Lincoln Investments, which Mr. Heinrich can donate to any educational initiative in the district. Mr. Heinrich plans to donate the money to the Indiana Area Foundation, Education Foundation, and earmark the money for a scholarship fund to support IASD students. I will make this call. I will use this seed money to establish the superintendent's award, a scholarship granted to one of our graduating seniors each year. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Rob Heinrich, the 2024.
That is a tremendous honor to receive this award, for sure, but this has much less to do with anything I did and is a testament to the work of all of the people in this room and the people in the hallways of these schools. You know, I've been blessed to be surrounded by some really incredible people in my life. I've had incredible mentors. I've had some great colleagues and friends that I've had the privilege of working with. We have incredible staff members. And all of us are dedicated to the principle of making sure that each and every one of our students has the best possible educational experience. And that's what we come to work for every day. That's why it's fun to come to work every day. Our credible team of administrators who give up an enormous amount of time and effort. The teachers who go above and beyond every single day. The support staff. Those people were never in the spotlight but are here every single day early and stay late to make sure our students have every opportunity. This award is their award, not mine. They embrace the change that was needed. We're not afraid of the work. The teachers add creativity and insights and passion to help students grow. And together, we're stronger, which is very, very important. And all of you, the school board, you want to talk about investing an incredible amount of time and expertise. You guys come here every single Monday and you dedicate that time and expertise. You have unwavering commitment to the success of our student, even if we don't agree on how. We agree on the why and the what, which is very, very important. So your willingness to make bold decisions and prioritize what matters most, which is making sure that every child succeeds, is what it's all about. So it's a great honor, but this is the community's award, not mine. Thank you very much.
So here it is again.
It made me look good.
There we go.
They don't have that in Photoshop.
There is none. There is none that powerful. But it was an honor. At least, and it's very happy that people.
I'm not certain. I didn't ask Denise to do any research. But I don't remember another superintendent, at least while I was on the board, that received this particular award.
That's wonderful.
There may have been. I may not have been aware of it. But I believe you're the first one, at least in recent memory, that received this award. And so congratulations.
And Walter, when you look at it, his reach goes far beyond just the school.
Oh, my.
Because I think.
He's it, yeah.
Josie, like at the library function that we had.
Right.
He was fantastic.
Here's Rob on the second floor donating his time and playing guitar.
Right.
For everyone to see.
Everyone knows him in Indiana.
They do.
It's true.
Well, Rob serves on, I believe, the United Way Board and the Chamber of Commerce. And, you know, one of the issues that, at least from my perspective, is it's important that we have this interaction with the community at all levels. The United Way certainly, the Chamber of Commerce, that they hear us and that we hear them so that we can resolve some of these issues so that we can really take this district into the next, into this 21st century. And Rob is certainly exemplary, even though those weren't mentioned in the citation, of doing those kind of outreach activities.
Yeah, I've said it before and I'll say it again. We are truly blessed to be in this community. I mean, I've worked in three different communities and, you know, this community is special. We really do have a powerful, you know, team mentality. And it really is a pleasure to work with all of you. A privilege to work with all of you. So thank you.
Okay. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is there anybody here from IAEA or AS? Our STA representative is not here this evening. Is anybody here from STUCO? Okay. Nobody here. All right, Rob, you're up again as superintendent's reporter.
Thank you, sir. As you mentioned, I have the privilege of being asked to serve on the Chamber Commerce Strategic Planning Process, which we did last week. It was a really nice event and we worked through a lot of the different aspects of workforce development. That was the committee I served on. And it was a privilege to work with those people and develop the vision for the next five years or so. And I don't want to steal the thunder or release everything, but they've focused on STEM initiatives and they're focused on healthcare. And they're focused on, you know, the things that we're focusing on. So it's, again, it's a good teamwork approach. And, you know, I look forward to that as it develops. We also had a parent night last week highlighting the unique dual enrollment opportunities that our students have. Again, if you don't know, a student, if they're a freshman or sophomore this year, can line up their dual enrollment classes through a partnership with WCCC, Westmoreland Community College, Miss Worth County College, and IUP to walk across the stage in a few years with an Indiana diploma on one hand and associate's degree from IUP on the other hand. And that's tremendous. And it is specifically unique to this area. I don't know of a single other community college that partners with a university like that to provide that opportunity. Kudos to everybody that worked on that. Justin, Wade, Doug, Carol Kaczynski, Holly Marusa, Katie Smith at the senior high on Armport, Kristen O'Hara, Dr. Amber Rakini from IUP, and Jen Echols from Westmoreland County Community College, who really did a lot of that work. You know, Wade especially was a spearhead on that. And, you know, he really, he wouldn't take no for an answer. So, you know, nice job to Wade on that one. But, you know, this is with, I want to say 35 parents at that event. So it's exciting where that's going. Also, last week, we are, Saturday, we had the NWCP banquet. We purchased a table for that event and all the seats were taken, which was great. I heard great things about it. I didn't get to attend myself, but I heard it was very, very nice. And I heard the speaker was very, very good.
She was good.
Yeah.
And the band was, this guy from Pittsburgh. Boy, that keyboard. Jazz and kind of a rock jazz. Really good. Anyway, we got an award that night. I went to the banquet. So this is for you, Rob. So we got the special recognition award. So I wanted you to know. It was a nice dinner. Everything, it was just, the band was great. That was exciting. And the speaker was Elena Roberts. And she's really, she's been around the country. She works at Pitt. She's a professor at Pitt. And she has written particularly about the southeastern part of the United States and the interaction between the various treaty communities, particularly in Florida, the Seminoles, and the whole trail of tiers thing. So she was, it was fascinating. Very good.
Absolutely. Good. Apologies, Rob. No worries at all. Much obliged. Thank you. But that's, I mean, that's a special banquet. The Freedom Fund banquet is, you know, those, the NWCP does a lot of good things for our students. They provide a scholarship for our students. They provide some educational opportunities for our students. So it's a great organization to support. We're proud of the work that they're doing in our community. This coming Thursday, I've been invited to sit on a panel at the IUP IRMC World Health Conference. So that's an honor. So if you get a chance to attend that, that is going on. And I wanted to thank IUP today for allowing our students the opportunity to come to the education day where we watched the women's basketball team beat up on Penn State Beaver. It was really, really fun. The kids were really excited. They were like chanting "IUP" so loud. I think they rattled the other team pretty well. They were loud the whole time. So thanks to President Driscoll and Dr. Riley and Dr. Rice and Mrs. Griffith for, you know, making that arrangement possible and Dr. Reed for being there as well. So that was a very, very nice event there today. A good way to start the week, for sure. And that is awesome.
All right. Thank you, Rob. Ron, you've got a listener's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back in April, the Department of Labor made a change to the overtime requirements, modifying it from a threshold where if you're an exempt employee, you do not get overtime. They moved it from 35 to 43 on July 1, 2024. And they were going to move it to almost 60 grand on January 1, '25. Friday, a federal court in Texas struck that down. So it's actually been struck down. We're going to revert back to previous to the Department of Labor's modification. So it goes back to the $35,000 at this point in time. So again, we're going to have to reassess because there were people who were going to make some changes based on the upcoming $60,000 modification. We saw this happen back in 2016 when there was a changeover in the presidency where once it was struck down, they have an opportunity to appeal, but they typically do not appeal. So we're thinking it's going to probably stop as the presidency changes. But I did want to update the board again because I know if we had a plan for some of those changes from exempt to non-exempt, it's going to go back to the $35,000 requirement. That's all, Mr. President. Any questions?
All right. Thank you. All right, we have a presentation.
Yes, sir. It is my pleasure and my honor to recognize an extraordinary leader in our community, Coach Dr. Sarah Brown, for being named the PIWA NFHS Coach of the Year. This prestigious award highlights Coach Brown's unwavering commitment and leadership and dedication to excellence, not only in swimming and diving, but in the development of young adults. Under her guidance, countless athletes have achieved remarkable success, not only in competition, but in their growth of individuals. Coach Brown has fostered a culture of hard work, resilience, and responsibility that inspires the team and everyone around her. So on behalf of the entire community, I want to wish her congratulations and to them this well-deserved honor. You make us all very incredibly proud and we look forward to seeing your continued success. So. Congratulations. You're named the PIWA NFHS Boys Swimming and Diving Coach of the Year. Congratulations.
That's amazing.
I mean, I didn't come without anything prepared, but I do want to thank you guys so much for all your support, always for our team. We ask for a lot to travel to different things, but I think the team likes to win. So when we win, we have to do more things. But I do appreciate coming here and being recognized. Hopefully, we can continue our track record this year. We, Dan was like, can you come tonight? I was like, tonight's our second night of practice. So. We just started. So this even looks really good. Our team looks great this year. So I'm hoping that we can continue on our track record with the boys. Girls' team looks great. We're going to have. I don't want to be talking.
I'll take this moment to say that I hear a lot of things about coaches from the community. And often, too often, there are negative things about coaching, right? Everybody thinks they know better. That's not true with Dr. Brown. I hear nothing but positive things about the culture that you've established and the work ethic that you've instilled in kids.
Working with high school kids, high school boys, these are my boys. They're hard work. It's hard work. But they are a good group of kids. I know you guys see them out in the community. They're good kids. But it's a lot. They're a lot. I am, I suppose, because right now I was saying he's got them all. The other thing is, we have great partnerships. We have, I always have a volunteer coach to come and help us with, from IUP. And so maintaining those partnerships is really, really important to us and so establishing that connection and being connected to the community. So I thank you guys for all the hard work that you do to maintain those really important connections. I'll continue to do my part. And I thank you guys for all the great stuff that you do to maintain that connection for us as well.
I would like to add that I believe this is the first time in school history that someone has won this award.
Wow.
So congratulations.
Would you like to be first?
Isn't this the first time that we've had a team place the first mistake? And he scored.
I scored.
It's really hard to do. So congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, we did a little team goal meeting. Friday was our first practice. Today was our second. And we did a little like intro. I heard him going around like, what are your goals for this year? I got some big goals. But maybe we won't be saying that anymore the first time. Maybe we'll be, they have really big goals this year. So maybe we'll be.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we're down to item number three. Minutes, approval of the minutes and the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second on the minutes and agenda. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motions carried. Board reports. I do not have an Indiana County Technology Center report. The meeting is tomorrow. So hopefully, we'll have something for you on the third. Sue, what's going on over at Aaron?
Ditto. Our meeting is tomorrow. So I'll have a report at the next meeting.
Okay. Jim, outreach.
We are not outreach until next year.
Okay. Quintina.
We haven't had a meeting yet. It's on Wednesday. However, the library is looking for four candidates to serve on the board starting January. So if you know anyone, contact me.
Very good.
Hi, Josie.
Correct.
Very good. Okay. Sally. What's going on with PSBA?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate what I sent all of you on email that Quintina and I attended the 2024 delegate assembly. She did it actually in person at Mechanicsburg. I did it on Zoom. And there are approximately 247 board members that attended it. It varied. When you saw online, it was, you know, it was different. People would leave and come back. And there were 47, you told me, in person. And I thought, I thought it was, I enjoyed it. I don't know what the advantages were about attending in person. And I'll ask you that in a minute. But I think next year, I would like to sit down possibly with the delegates and with Rob and go over the things we're going to vote on. Just, I think it would be a good discussion, even though none of the votes were close. So it's not like our two votes made that much of a difference. But we were there and we learned. Was there an advantage to attending in person?
I think so. You can see the passion in the room. Like, it was a lot of passionate members running up to the mic, making statements on all the topics we had to vote. So it was kind of high emotions in that room. So that's, if you want to experience that, you know, then you would want to be there in person.
Well, that was the interesting part, too. People really went on and on. And some of them were really passionate. And, you know, what we voted on was just points that they will sort of champion for us with the legislators. The people, I think, were acting like we were putting things in stone. It was more just, you know, whatever. That's just my take. You agree with that? So that was it. I don't have anything else. I'm glad we did it.
Okay, Sally, good. Thank you all. Sue, academic and extracurricular.
Yes, we had a lengthy meeting November 4. We had a lot of great guests and visitors, teachers, and others that came. Most of the things that we discussed are on the agenda as voting items. So I'll just highlight the things that are not on your agenda. And that was, we discussed the speech caseload and the possibility of an additional speech language pathologist to support our caseload numbers. Dr. Price from IUP is part of the committee. She sent us some suggestions. I know Rob said he and Justin are already talking about maybe some of the things that she mentioned. I don't know if you want to say anything more about that.
No, it was an interesting perspective that, you know, we're going to explore. The good news is that our speech pathologists are working hard to make sure that their numbers don't go over that limit. So right now, we're still okay. But, you know, at any moment, we could come back. And if we do have to add staff, we're definitely going to look at what Dr. Price's recommendation was because it seemed like that would be a long-term solution to the problem. So, is there anything else?
No. And her solution was really based on the idea of having one of our SLPs being a diagnostician. So when we're identifying students for speech services, if you have that person who's the expert in the identification of it, that will eventually reduce numbers long term. And I think it's, I think it's an amazing idea if we get to that point where we need someone.
Also, we heard an overview of the senior high tech programming from Mr. Keaton Stansfield, Mark Bren. They're doing some exciting things and they're making some tweaks to their programming that hopefully will get more students involved. That was one of the issues that we had was that low number of students enrolled in the classes. So they're really working hard to revamp and have some new ideas to get more students. So we're hoping that that pays off. We also had an overview of the enrichment program with our new gifted coordinator, Ms. Carrie Schneider. And we had an overview of Mr. Gerald Smith's great sabbatical experience. Otherwise, are we okay to move to the voting? And is everyone okay if I take most of these as consent?
Yep.
Five point two, creation of new courses that was for the aspiring educators program in partnership with I C T C, STEM Center drone pilot course at the senior high and the B C I T curriculum to include A I coding and other initiatives. Five point three was professional development from bounce back for the teachers. Five point four, two field trip requests, one junior high French students and the others for seven senior high orchestra students. A service agreement with Family Counseling Center of Armstrong County is five point five. Five point six, we need an assistant junior high volleyball coach. And five point seven was a student disciplinary agreement, two, four, two, five dash.
Okay, it's been moved in second on motions five point two through five point seven. Questions, comments or discussion on any of these motions?
Comment on five two and five six. Five two, the B C I T is making it possible for kids to opt out of the low level coding class and move into a higher level coding class. We require everybody right now to be in the low level coding class. Some of them are coming in at doctoral levels and this would accommodate that that particular student. Five six, fully encourage the varsity sports to teach sports of lifelong activity. And to do that, you don't have to cut people. And so basketball volleyball, people have done that. I believe basketball is also similar. I know that tennis is also similar where they're not cutting kids. They're teaching kids that don't have that don't have any varsity skills at a very low level. They're bringing these kids in and teaching them and allowing them to participate. And that creates a lot of work to have twenty kids that have never played volleyball before. This fills that gap. But we should encourage all of our varsity sports to do this kind of activity. So I'm very happy to see this kind of response. The volleyball program, I believe, some other programs are also showing this response at the junior high level.
Yes.
On five point two, I'm really delighted that we're going to do this with the I C T C. I think it's effective to try this type of a program more and more, particularly in the STEM areas. So I'm I think it's a great idea and I think it will work well. It's a wonderful subject.
Yeah, Julie, I agree. I think the drone program is like well needed. You know, we've talked about it here before. So I just know it's it's like a field that's really expanding fast. And, I mean, knowing that we're going to get some kids into it, hopefully start staffing that. There's there's very few people in our area that actually do it right now. But, you know, you you can talk everything from realtors to, you know, photographers are using it now. So it's it's gaining speed. And Dan rode the volleyball programs. My daughter Athena, by the way, cannot wait till next year. She goes to junior high and she's all in for volleyball. So mark her down.
She's six three, you don't have to worry about it.
And only ten years old.
Yeah, and I would also like to note on that drone, a little kudos to Mike Lehman, who already received the first five thousand dollar grant check today from P E Skills Games. So, you know, a third of that new cost has already been taken off the table and he's continued to explore several other grants. So with any luck, that'll be no new cost to the district.
Nice.
And Rob, would you comment on the how it's an opportunity expense on the ten thousand dollar for the salary?
Absolutely, yes, sir. That's going to cost us every teacher, you know, on a per period basis is about a ten thousand dollar cost roughly for every period that they are instructing or covering a study hall or a lunch period, whatever it is that they're assigned to that period. This is going to be added to his assignments, but if he wasn't doing this, he'd be doing something else. We're already paying that cost, paying that fee. So that ten thousand dollars is not a new cost to the district. It's something we're already committed to. It's just going to be directed toward this particular case.
Rob, how will, just a quick question, how are we going to market it to the kids?
I think that's already taken care of itself a lot. A lot of these kids are already excited. They know about it and it's coming. But, you know, we'll advertise it in a variety of ways, through the handbook and through their their scheduling process. They do a lot of that. So it'll be it'll be a known commodity here very quickly.
How many people can the program hold?
As many as he can fit in his class. I'd probably say twenty four would be perfect. Any more than that would be pushing it. But, you know, you know, good, up to thirty if we get enough drones, so.
It'd be a nice problem to have. We can't do it in one period.
It will be. That's it.
Okay, any other questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor of five two through five seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Jim, policy and personnel?
No committee meeting report. And I don't think we're having policy.
Just.
Till the next day. So. Do six, two and six, three. I gotta read all those. All right, six, two and six, three as together, support mentor teachers. That Christie Manning be employed as a support mentor teacher for twenty five, twenty, twenty four, twenty five school year. Compensation is seven hundred and five dollar per semester or seven dollars fifty eight cents per day based upon her appointment date. And approval of insulin pricing lawsuit resolution. As listed. There you go. Perfect.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
All right. Six, four is, I guess I could include that one, too. I don't have a name. Sorry, termination of an employee. Employee. As listed, employee twenty one seventy four and employee twenty sixty nine.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. And these other ones, anybody with a name, I gotta read. So six, five resignation of par educator. Board accepts and regret the letter of resignation from Elena Singer, par educator effective November fourth, two thousand twenty four, authorized administration to post advertise and interview for this position.
Okay. Questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, six, five passes.
All right. And then six, six, based on the recommendation, the administration of board employed Cassandra Newman as par educator retroactive to November sixth, two thousand twenty four, an hourly rate of thirteen dollars seventy five cents per hour, subject to sixty day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved.
Second.
Questions, comments or discussion on six, six? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Six, seven, extra duty, extra pay. The board approves the following extra duty, extra pay assignments for the twenty four, twenty five school year. Paula McKee, girls' ball, girls' volleyball assistant, two thousand. Period dot com, two thousand three hundred and twenty two dollars. And Hannah Barker, cheerleading winter coordinator, two thousand six hundred and twenty four dollars.
Second.
Moving in second on extra duty, extra pay assignments. Questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
And finally, based on the recommendation of the administration, Christie Clark be hired as the confidential secretary receptionist at the administration office at the starting salary of thirty eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Tom, buildings and grounds?
Had a buildings and grounds meeting prior to this one. We had a presentation on mural that the junior high are planning in the library, I'm sorry, the cafeteria. We had an update in the portable works on Eisenhower. It's moving ahead. Had presentation on four change orders, which are on the agenda tonight. Talked about the landscaping and Eisenhower school sign, no decision opposed. Senior high roof ladders is going to come back to the final number. We received solar studies for the senior high maintenance garage. We briefly talked about the high school classroom projects, decided to table our physical business for the next meeting. And we didn't do anything else. So we have a few motions. We're going to skip seven, four. Tonight. Bring that back in a week or two. So the only thing I have is Eisenhower change orders. So move to seven point three Eisenhower change orders, one, two, three and four. K and K Plumbing, J C O R and McCrossan, McCrossan be approved and submitted.
Second.
Moved in second on the change orders. Questions, comments or discussion on that motion? Nothing hurt? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And seven, five, based on the recommendation, the administration of board approved the district's continued participation in A R N I U twenty eight, R W A M sourcing for internet service.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second on seven point five. Questions, comments or discussion on that? Rob, we do want to.
It's something we do every year, sir, every so often, sir. We work with the other school districts in the A R N I U to get a discounted rate on internet. That's pretty much it. So they're putting that out for bid. We have to authorize them to do so on our V I.
Okay, thank you. Further questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, down to Julia.
Thank you. We have no meeting tonight. Our next meeting is twenty fifth.
Next Monday.
I didn't see anything unusual on the bills.
No, apparently there was construction bills.
So I'd like to move that the board approves the bills as submitted.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments or discussion on the approval of the bills? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're down to item number nine. Nine point one, we have a discussion item. Sally had requested that we talk about the meeting format and schedule for the upcoming year. So Sally, it's all yours.
Okay. So I, you know, when I first came on the board, I I thought that the committee idea was great with all the meetings we have. But as the year progressed, I don't think, in my opinion, that it's the most efficient format. And I I called and I have board member friends in other school districts and most people do the committee of the whole. And that's what I've experienced in my past. So do you know what that means? Okay, so that would mean like you have a meeting, say, the first Monday or the second Monday of the month, and it's a work session. And so we basically would go over anything that is pertinent in on the different committees. It wouldn't be a voting session. And there can still be committee heads that, you know, that can be sort of our experts on those committees. But we would discuss as a whole all the committee stuff so that you would never miss anything on a committee discussion. And then the next Monday, you have a meeting where it is the voting meeting and we vote on the things we talked about at the committee. So we basically only have two meetings a month. And that's how most of the school districts around here do it. And and my my I feel my advantage to it would be we all get to be in the committee meetings. It's less time for people because for me, I always say I'm retired. I have all the time in the world. But for people on the school board that have kids with all these activities, I remember and that's how I did the school board. It was tough. And I think when you have two hours, you're going to stretch out the time of talking for two hours. It just, you know, if you have a limited time to discuss things, then I think you can be more efficient in that format. I could be wrong. Also, the committee heads, if they have, you know, questions, they could call Rob during the two meetings. But we basically be free to research what we need to do on all those other times. So I don't know if Indiana did it that way. It doesn't really matter if Indiana did it that way before, but I'm proposing that we at least consider doing that. And I don't know if you have any questions because I have experienced that format before.
I think one of the things that that does is it leaves, I mean, the administrators that are here so many Mondays a month, it relieves them of some of those evenings that they they have families and and kids and their activities as well.
True.
I mean, I even think, I mean, we go second and fourth, even if we had to use that third Monday as if we have an overflow or we know we have presentations. But, I mean, talking with other school board members in the county and also around the around the Western P A, most of them do go by what we said, like our second Monday would be and a just workshop meeting. And then the fourth Monday would be where we do all the voting.
Right, and that and the only exception would be during budget time, where we would definitely have to call extra meetings to discuss the budget. I mean, I think we could, I don't want anybody to say we're not voting tonight on it, but I think it's food for thought. And you can you can talk to other school boards and see, whatever.
I have.
Yeah, what are your concerns?
Well, not so much concerns, two comments. Comment number one is I don't care what the other school districts do because we're way better. Comment number two is, I mean, we just had a four hour academic committee meeting. We've had multiple three hours building in grounds. There's a lot. It's a big district. There's a lot of issues. Some of the outreach committee is very low maintenance, you know, that we don't have a lot to talk about. If something comes up, we can bring it up in, you know, a different section. A lot of the discussions that we get into, all the the buildings and grounds. And we did an hour meeting tonight that was very efficient, but there's a lot of issues. You know, we didn't talk about the solar. We got those, you know, packets that any any one of those issues can spur, you know, a twenty minute conversation, which is going to eat up a lot of that time. So that that'd be a concern I would have lumping that all together because if we spend, you know, an hour talking about the air conditioning in the gym and then when do we have time to talk about, you know, the budget? Like you said, we'd have to have other meetings anyway. I just, I I have only existed in this format and I found it very helpful because, you know, throughout the the three years I've been here so far, it's the needs have changed. There's been, you know, when we were talking about the teacher's contract, you know, that was that ate up a lot of time. And then Eisenhower, that ate up a lot of time. Things always are changing. We did buildings and grounds as a committee as a whole, you know, towards the end of the Eisenhower project. So we did do that, but that's that my only issue with.
Right, and for someone like you to say that who has kids and is very busy, then I think, okay.
When it also, I don't have much of a financial mind. I don't I don't go to a lot of the audit and finance and academic. I don't, I've gone to some, I haven't gone to others. I don't feel I have a whole lot to offer if there's something on there that I feel like I, you know, want to participate in. But I don't, other than listening, I don't have expertise in that area. I can't really add a lot, so I I don't go to those ones, you know.
Right, got it. Okay, so so that, you know, that's.
It's just the other perspective.
Yeah, for sure.
One of the thoughts that I had was even have all the committees on one night or maybe just have two committees.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Like, instead of having all these separate committees have, it seems like right now the Buildings and Grounds Committee takes up a lot of time because Eisenhower academic always takes up a lot of time because that's what we're here for, the academics. So maybe if we kind of split, you know, five, four, have two committees and we lump some of the other things in with academic and buildings and grounds and then meet together. But if we came on the same, you know, some half of us could meet downstairs, maybe in the curriculum room or somewhere. And the other half, you know, Rob and Justin, you could split up one and Tara, you know, between the committees and.
So you mean like the third, that third, are you still doing like that third Monday that you'd have committee meetings?
Well, like my committee is usually on the first Monday and Tom, Buildings and Grounds are usually what, the third? And our other meetings are two and four. But if we had one regular night for our voting meetings and then one Monday night for all committee meetings.
And they separate.
Separate, yeah, but separate us.
That's that's another option.
Just keep in mind that if you're, it's an interesting idea if you separate. The public may only be able to make one or the other would be the only, the only issue.
Right, right, true.
I mean, we get very few public, unless we invite them to our meetings.
They can go on and watch them, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
But I'm I'm hoping, but I agree with you, Sally, that every single Monday is a lot for our administrators.
Right.
And I think, too, maybe through our visioning.
That's what I was just going to bring up next. I'm hoping in our visioning that we can find a way to be more concise with our, and I'm just as guilty as anybody else. I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, but to be at least more concise with our discussions. Because sometimes it just, you know, I'm sitting here thinking, why are we talking about this? And, you know, I'm hoping the visioning can help us there.
Buildings and grounds and after.
Tom, I think you have something.
Finance is fast.
Tom. One of the problems with having a meeting of one month voting meeting is that means four weeks between decision making. So when the administration has something that has to happen.
Yeah.
We have to wait four weeks. So so that's a problem. I also would like to point out that we've been very successful in being open and 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 getting public support into our board meetings and our committee meetings. In that, in that, if you're interested in a committee meeting, it's it's open. You can look at the videotape. You can you can come to the meeting. In the format you're proposing, though, you can't spend three hours talking about data in academics.
True.
And then and then give me two hours to talk about change orders. So we, it it's a problem in in you're really interested in the data of academics as.
True.
I'm really thrilled you are, okay? Because I'm a little bit like Jim on that, okay? Okay. But I have to trust in academic that you two are really knowing what you're doing. Julie knows about the financing stuff and so I I pay attention when she makes a recommendation. And it makes it, I don't have to go to all the meetings, okay? I don't, okay? But I come to most of them because that's just the habit I'm into. You don't have to, you have to trust the board members in those committees that are doing, are doing the job. And so you don't have to go to every Monday. You can, okay? And so you can come when we have something critical.
True.
You can come to those meetings and the public can come to those meetings. And I think, I think the 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 lack of controversy that we've had from the public in the last couple of years is because of because of how open we are and how how inviting we are. One of the problems, one of the problems we have when I was in the, when we were doing committee of the whole in the board and we met two weeks was we had a committee of the whole, but we wouldn't allow those people to talk.
Wow.
Okay, and so now in your work session, you could allow them to talk.
True.
But then you get, then you get a thirty minute presentation on my sabbatical.
Yeah.
And so you gotta, yeah, so.
One other concern I kind of had was if you, like in Buildings and Grounds, we have our, what's it called, clerk of the work, Larry, you know, and he he's there to present. Well, if that's scheduled number five, he's here for an hour and a half not doing anything because we're listening to a presentation on the new science curriculum.
True.
The people that come that present when we have, you know, if we do the solar, those people are going to be here. The Epsco people, when they were here, I kind of foresee it kind of bottlenecking. We're going to have to do all that first because you don't want to waste those people's time. They don't want to sit through, you know, some of the other stuff that we'd have to talk about in a larger meeting.
Right.
Well, talking with other, like I know one in the Pittsburgh area, it's the administrators that funnel out what comes into the committee. When they, when they have presentations, they they do videos and they send it out to the board members to watch the videos on their own time. And that alleviates time where they leave it up to their administrators to weed out what comes to the committee meeting and what may be presented via email.
Yeah, I I was thinking when you said about the data presentations and I I enjoyed it, but there could be another way to be more efficient to deliver that information to us. I mean, that was the first time we had that, which was great. But, you know, those types of things can be delivered in other formats. And then the teachers don't have to to be here, too.
Two things, Doug, to your point, my my brother serves, he's been president over at Michana Valley for, I can't, I don't know how long. But that's exactly what they do. They'll funnel a lot of stuff through videos and stuff like that. So you're watching it ahead of time and not having to go through the whole iteration at the meeting. So it kind of cuts back on a lot of that lead time discussion. And he said they have their meeting down. It's bang, 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 they get things done. Now, it's a smaller district, understood. But he said they've they've kind of took, taken it way down.
Are those available to the public, so they are also able to watch those videos?
I I don't know. I I could find out from he, but I know that they've done a lot of work to to really get it down because he said they used to go over two. So that's just one thought. And the second thought would be, you know, so instead of coming three, like Mondays a month or sometimes four, I'd rather if it's just two, if we're doing the second and the fourth, you know, whatever committees. Because I I agree with you, Tom, I like the different committees. I don't mind those different committees. I think that's a good thing. But let's let's put all the meetings in one night. Now, if I'm here till eight, you know, let's just make it, if I have one meeting, I got to stay till nine. I'd rather do it like right now than coming back next week for one hour, you know, from five to six. Let's just, let's just get it done.
Right. And I also think in envisioning, I'm hoping that we look at things and say, what what really are our duties? And what are really the administration duties? Because sometimes I think we step into decisions that that I don't even know that a school board, you know, we're getting into the weeds a little bit in some things that we shouldn't be in the weeds about. And I'm thinking this is the administrators, you should just hear from them and get their opinions and that's it. Whereas, you know, we can get down the weeds a little bit too much to.
So so I have a couple of comments.
Say.
I missed that, Sally. I missed that Sally.
I'm sorry.
Probably a good thing I did. Okay. So, the idea of having more than one committee meeting on one night, the problem there is, what happens if I have an interest in both committees? And I, it makes it difficult for me as a board member, do I go downstairs or do I stay upstairs? And that, I think, was a little bit the question that Ron was raising about, you know, which committee meeting to the people that attend? And even though maybe they don't attend in person, they're attending, attending online, what happens if the committee member or a community member has an interest in more than one committee? Then they're kind of forced to watch it in, you know, the video. And that's the question that I would ask your brother, Chris, is doing it, just watching a video, doesn't really allow for the interaction. Because while you might say something, Julie might pick up on that and then add to that. It takes what your comment may be to a, a different level or a different place. And, and so that interaction between board members, but between the board members in the community, would be the one thing that I would, I would be concerned that you would miss out on that.
So we got, we have like five people online tonight. So how many people would really be conflicted between the two committees?
So, so, so I'm going to propose that we, I'm going to propose that we close, that we close our ninth grade basketball team and eliminate. Okay? And I'm being very facetious, okay? But when that happened, Chris, we were in the gym for like three days, okay? Because the people came out of the woodwork. And I think quite frankly, to Tom's point, we shut down an elementary school in the borough. And the night we voted on it, nobody showed up.
That's right.
We had somebody come out and complain about the taxes, and rightfully so. But nobody showed up to close a school. I think what's happening is, this board, particularly with the committee system that we have, have developed such confidence, or the community has developed such confidence, that we are doing it in a transparent and open manner, that they can come when they want to, to put the input in. And that there is, it's kind of like, okay, I don't do a lot of hiking, but I would be really upset if they decided to cut Sequoia National, all the trees out of Sequoia National Park. Okay, I don't go there.
No.
But it, but it's, but it's knowing that, it's knowing that I can't.
This is my point.
And I, and I, and I, and I think, I think, I think that that's.
So I appreciate the posturing.
But I agree, I mean, going back to about the presentation on video, you still allow the person to come in and they can answer questions after the board members have the opportunity to watch it, or even community members. It's not like you're not going to ask questions, but the longest part of the, say, group of teachers wants to present on the curriculum. Let them do it on video, we watch it all before we come into that meeting, those teachers will be there if we have any questions.
And as long as it's possible for the public.
There's other options.
Because outside the box.
I think we need to think outside the box.
And that, and that, and that part of it might work, to cut down some of the, to cut down the meeting times. The other thing is, when we were doing committees of the whole, some of those nights, it was ten thirty and eleven o'clock, that the meetings would go that long before we'd go home. Okay? And, and I don't really care to be here until ten, I mean, you guys are great to be with, don't misunderstand me, but I don't really care to be here ten thirty, eleven, and some of the nights were even after eleven.
Oh, my, that's crazy.
And, and then, and then Julia's committee, the finance committee, even if we did go with two committees, we're almost going to have to have a third one, at least for that April, May, June timeframe. And then maybe in the October, November, whenever the, or December, whenever the audit report comes.
So, so here's my challenge for you, right? So, let's think outside the box, right? Before we're ready to shut everything down, let's, let's think, and I think Sally's just saying, let's give some consideration to doing things a little bit differently. I think we can explore that, we do this every year, and let's not just go with the status quo.
I like that.
That's my vote, okay, Rob?
I'd just like to say, I agree with all of you, you know, I think that the Mondays are. The Mondays are, the Mondays are, are a lot, right? The, the time investment in this board is a lot. However, I agree with Mr. Shroth, that it keeps the board meetings relatively clean, which is, there's value there. So why don't you let me give a couple of different options, where you send them out, to you, you know, the pros and cons of, of each that might reduce the number of Mondays we're here, but still maintain the, the, the work, you know what I mean? The transparency, exactly.
I love that idea.
Good solution.
And again, I think out of our visioning, you know, once we set our goals, which is part of the visioning process, then we'll know for sure, do we still need the same committees and the same committee structure, or do we want to rethink?
Right, and I can ask Attorney Reepack for clarification, but on the reorganization meeting, we're supposed to set our meeting dates for the next year, but I don't think there's anything that opposes, like, we can make a motion in January that says, we're changing our committee meeting dates to.
We just do that so you, you don't have to advertise more than once.
Right, it saves us a couple bucks.
That's great.
You can change, modify.
That way we're not so rushed either, we can still talk about it in the vision.
You're going to do that for a cent?
Yes, ma'am, I'll write it up, give you a. Yeah.
I said you won the award, so go ahead.
Yeah, so squeeze it in.
For what?
We represent twenty-seven school districts, I'm happy to share what they do in the different school districts, just to give you some comparable.
Appreciate that, thank you, sir, see you, Ron will do it for us.
It's all good.
All right, okay, any further discussion on this then?
You're not even at the meeting. Hey, wait, 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 let me get my flashlight out. That man back there is left the meeting table.
So, so we, we, so we are through with the discussion item. Josie raised her hand, she is, 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 is reading my mind, because item nine point two is public comment on agenda items.
I'm sorry, yeah.
It's perfectly all right. I have been attending Indiana area school district for forty years, for forty years, so I have put in more time.
There you go.
While I appreciate all the time that you give. I have watched the committee system evolve, and what good it has done for transparency within the community.
Okay.
Anybody can come to a committee meeting and be recognized and share a, a perspective. We need that. There has been less contention, I have observed that. I don't always agree with what goes on in the committees, and I do know that it takes a great deal of time, because I've put in that time, and I do serve on the academic committee, because it's important to me. It's important to me to see how we're evolving as a school district. But I would caution you to try to, the transparency issue is absolutely essential to the efficiency and the goodwill of the community.
That's a good point.
So I really do want you to keep that in consideration. You can tweak it, you can do whatever.
Right.
You made this commitment for running for school board. And like, it's a shame that you're not paid. I truly believe that you should be getting some honorarium or something. But it is a commitment that you've made, and we, we really appreciate that commitment. And it's a commitment of time. And as a former teacher, my day didn't end after my contract time was up. It ended at eleven, eleven-thirty at night correcting papers and doing things. So we know that education takes time.
Yeah.
So if you'll consider that, please. I don't want to put forty more years in committee school board meetings, so let's see if we can keep those committees going and, and keep that transparency.
Okay, thanks, Joe, I think that's great.
Thank you, Josie. Okay, we did have some enclosures. Ron, we also had an executive session.
Yeah, we discussed the support staff, potential support staff, memorandum of agreement, and then a tax assessment appeal update as well.
Okay.
This would be a good time to announce the executive sessions too.
Absolutely.
How is my case hold, or do, or do you want it back?
Either way, I can either take it or you can take, you let me know. If they're still here, we'll take it. Just an announcement for the public, we will have some exec, board workshops or exec sessions coming up next Monday evening, December ninth and December sixteenth for visioning exercises.
What time is that again, Rob?
Next week will be right after the audit and finance committee, and then whenever that's over, and then the next two, the ninth and the sixteenth will be five thirty P M.
We're going to go three hours, so.
Wouldn't be nine o'clock.
Oh, it's okay.
What's the next two, what's the time on the next two? Five thirty P M.
Five thirty P M.
So seven, five thirty, five thirty?
Probably not seven, I would say.
How long do you anticipate your?
Like six?
An hour.
Six fifteen?
I mean, we're efficient in the audit and finance committee.
I'd say six next week, six, six.
It's five thirty.
I'll send you a mic, I'll send you a calendar. I will send you calendar mics too.
Okay.
For the sake of transparency.
Yes.
And for the sake of transparency, can you disclose the topics that may be discussed in those executive sessions?
Yeah, we're talking about the visioning of the, the way the board's going to operate, what our priorities are, and set kind of a direction in, in, hand in hand with the comprehensive plan for the district that's coming. So, that's what we'll talk about, strategy.
All right.
Okay. Our next board meeting will be a special board meeting on Tuesday, December the third. Please take note of that, it won't be next month, it won't be Monday the second, but rather Tuesday the third. And that will be for the reorganization purposes primarily, probably followed by a regular meeting afterwards for general purposes. As was noted earlier, audit and finance, the next meeting will be November the twenty-fifth. We'll have academic also on December the third, both starting at five thirty. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we stand adjourned. All right.